Hello and welcome to Represent NYC Election Coverage. I'm Ben Max, your host and the Executive Editor of Gotham Gazette. Today, we're pleased to bring you a debate in the Democratic primary for City Council District 9. And District 9 includes parts of Upper Manhattan, particularly Central Harlem, as well as parts of Morningside Heights and East Harlem. I will soon introduce you to nine Democratic candidates competing in the primary, the vote for which will occur in June, and they are with us for today's debate. This race is part of the 2021 New York City election cycle, which is well underway and coming up to the June primary. It's poised to be the most significant municipal election in decades. All of city government is on the ballot, and because so few incumbents are eligible to run for their current seats due to term limits, New Yorkers are electing many new office holders and a next roster of leadership for our city. There will be a new mayor of New York City elected here in 2021, as well as a new city comptroller, several new borough presidents, and many new city council members. Now, the representative for City Council District 9 may or may not be new when the new class of city council is seated in January, because incumbent council member Bill Perkins is seeking reelection. Unfortunately, Council Member Perkins has declined the invitation to debate today, but we do have nine challengers with us. There are others also on the ballot in this crowded field. But we're happy to have these nine candidates with us for today's important discussion. Along with this race, there are a number of incumbents eligible for and seeking reelection, including the city's public advocate. And there are a number of other races to know about, especially in Manhattan, where there's a crowded and competitive district attorney race. Now, party primaries are set for June, and the general election in the fall will culminate on November 2. This is the first full set of municipal elections that will feature both early voting as well as the new ranked choice voting system. Now, ranked choice voting applies only to party primaries like this one and special elections. And we explain ranked choice voting at length in a separate show, so you can find that and check it out. But to put it quickly, you can rank your preferences in order up to five candidates. Ranked choice voting is at play in this primary, so as you're watching this debate, don't just choose your favorite candidate, but start thinking about your other choices as well. So this city election cycle would be of enormous importance under more usual circumstances. But it's obviously unfolding at a time of great crisis for our city, raising the stakes of the decisions that you, the voter, will make. This new wave of city leadership will quite clearly make or break the city's recovery from the devastation of the COVID-19 pandemic and its many impacts on health, families, jobs, housing, education, and much more. New York City faced a number of crises even before the pandemic, of course, and some of those have only worsened. So it's a really important time of choosing here in New York City, and we're pleased to bring you many individual interviews with candidates for citywide and borough-wide offices. Find those, as well as city council debates like this one. We hope this and other debates and interviews will help you sort through your many choices and make informed decisions when it's time to vote. So let's get to today's debate among candidates for city council. This is a position that includes key responsibilities and powers around constituent services, local problem solving, citywide legislating, budgeting, and land use decisions, and still more. Joining me now by Zoom are nine Democratic candidates running in City Council District 9. They are William Allen, Cordell Clear, Joshua Clennan, Pierre Gooding, Ruth McDaniel, Athena Moore, Kristin Richardson-Jordan, Mario Rosser, and Keith Taylor. Welcome and thank you all for being here. So briefly, the rules of this debate are we're jumping right into questions and answers, and you'll have one minute to answer each question. There might be a little bit of time for open discussion or rebuttals if needed, and I will very likely ask you some follow-up questions, so don't be surprised if towards the end of your time, I ask you for an example or to specify something or for other detailed information to help give voters a clearer sense of where you stand or what you're proposing. We will try to keep the debate moving, given that we have nine candidates with us, and we'll try to cover a lot of ground. But I'll tell the candidates and the viewers right up front, there will be a lot that we won't be able to get to in this time, but we're going to try to get to a number of key issues and let these candidates tell you about their vision for being your city council member. Towards the end of our time together, there will be a quick lightning round of yes, no, short answer questions, and we'll keep that going until we get to one-minute closing statements at the end. Candidates will answer in the same order every time, but we'll start with a different candidate each round. That order will be by last name alphabetically. So we will go in the same order I just introduced you for round one, which is starting with William Allen and finishing with Keith Taylor, and then we'll have a different order for round two. All right, William Allen, let's get started here. In one minute, please tell us, tell viewers, tell voters, tell me, tell your fellow candidates, what specific qualifications can you cite for becoming a city council member? And what specific instances of service to the public can you highlight for voters? Your qualifications for the position and your instances of public service, please, go ahead.
Thank you very much and good day, viewers. My name is William Allen. I am uniquely qualified for this position. I've served in the local community board. In fact, I was the first teenager ever appointed to one in the history of the city. I was the youngest person ever appointed as a trustee of a school district. I have been a nonprofit chief executive officer. I've been a public agency head. I'm the Manhattan Democratic Chief formerly of the New York City Board of Elections. I was president of District 5 schools. I was president of communities and schools of New Jersey. I headed up a community land trust in this region. When I was a student, I was a student leader. I was the graduate rep on the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, on the Finance Committee and the Student Affairs Committee. I think I'm uniquely qualified for this position, and the voters will see that.
Thank you. Cordell Clear, over to you.
Yes, good morning. I feel that I am uniquely qualified for this position as someone who has served this community for over 35 years. I have spent 20 of those years, almost 20 of those years, in public service, working in the city council and in the New York State Senate. I've been a Democratic district leader in two districts that are within the district for over a decade, and I have been an activist and an advocate, a parent, and a school education advocate for over 30 years in this community. I've built coalitions, worked with coalitions, gotten legislation passed. I know how to get things done. I know how to get results, and I have been active during my entire time and have my ear to the ground in this community and have listened to all the things that they have said in these past decades. And I feel as though I'm qualified to represent those concerns in City Hall.
Thank you. Joshua Clennan.
Good morning. My name is Joshua Clennan. I'm the most qualified candidate to serve our community in the city council, because I'm the only candidate who works directly in affordable housing, actually working on the ground to address our affordable housing prices in our community by managing low-income housing cooperatives to make sure that working-class members of our community can maintain long-term affordability, but also maintain generational wealth for their families. In addition to that, I currently serve in leadership on our local community board, Manhattan Community Board 10, where I serve as the treasurer of the board and chair of his district needs task force. In that role, I've been able to effectively advocate for resources for our community to go to our public schools, our parks, our health and hospitals. All of these things, we've even been able to advocate for a non-police response to mental health crises, which started out as a pilot program in Harlem and now will be implemented citywide. In addition to that, I'm the only candidate in this race who is a small business owner in Harlem, who understands the challenges that small businesses face and how we need to reform the city's procurement process.
Thank you. And we are over to Pierre Gooding.
Hi, my name is Pierre Gooding. I'm a small business owner, as an attorney, a deacon, and a teacher in our community. I feel that I am best qualified to be the next city councillor in Harlem. In terms of the instances of community service, that's where I think that we take the lead. We put a state senate candidate in jail who was scamming the public in Harlem in 2017. We brought home 800 people from Ghana, Americans who were marooned there with Trump saying to leave them over there. We had to fight with the administration. And we ran two homeless shelters over the past three years in Harlem and Queens. So we feel that we have shown that we are best for this position over the years.
Pierre, real quick, when you say you put a state senate candidate in jail, I think that will grab some attention. What does that mean? Who's we?
Sure. Yeah, well, John Gerodis in 2017 was a state senate candidate running against Bill Perkins, actually, 2016, and he was on your ballot from Rikers, because I put him there on 10 counts of fraud. The story is fairly well-known. Chris Hansen came down to cover the story, it's 600,000 views on YouTube. Anyone can find it, but basically you had an individual who was running for public office who was scamming the public on Craigslist, and he had to be stopped.
And you did that work in what respect?
Well, I want to put the case together to put him in jail and worked with the police precincts and Cy Vance to make sure it happened.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Ruth McDaniel, over to you.
Hello, I'm Ruth McDaniel, and I have several things to make me uniquely qualified for this position as city council. Number one, I'm a resident of Harlem, a longtime resident of Harlem. I don't have a business here, but I do have an organization called Breaking the Change of Your Mind, which deals with reentry platform. I have dealt with the disenfranchisement of Harlem for decades under some of the very people who are running, who have set it positions of power and continued the drama. And I just feel like myself and others have a voice, and it has to be heard. I've worked 25 years for the city of New York, some of which time in school safety. I've worked in all of the schools in Harlem, as well as the precincts in Harlem. I'm currently sitting as vice president of the 32nd Precinct Council in Harlem. And I just think that my voice is clear to the needs of people. Business owners have a perspective about business. And even though I have an understanding about business, I have an MPA in public administration. It gives me the credible understanding that I do understand the format of public administration, but also knowing that there's separations between business and residency and what's needed in a community.
Thank you. Athena Moore.
Hi, I am Athena Moore, candidate for District 9. I am a proud Democrat, a mom, a single mother, raising a 15-year-old daughter. I have worked over the past seven years as director for the Manhattan Borough President in her Northern Manhattan office located in a storefront on 125th Street, where I oversee constituent services and had critical input in land use, budget, public policy, as well as community boards. I have been appointed in many positions during this time to serve the small business community, to serve the faith community, to work in coalition with our violence interrupters and NYPD, as well as to serve the housing community. I'm a daughter of NYCHA, New York City Public Housing. I was raised in a community that was poor and disenfranchised, and I am uniquely qualified, because I will always advocate through my positions for the voice of the most vulnerable. I've served as a nonprofit executive and an educator in the CUNY and the private school system.
Thank you. Kristin Richardson-Jordan, over to you.
Hi, so my name is Kristin Richardson-Jordan. I sometimes go by KRJ or just Kristin for Harlem. I have served as an organizer and an activist since high school. I am now 34 years old. I founded a Harlem Cop Watch team, which is like it sounds. We basically monitor police activity. Police accountability is a big part of my platform. I also founded an organization to take care of youth in Harlem called Freedom Love Birthright. I also have been running senior care programs in Central Harlem Senior Center and a Philip Randolph Senior Center. Part of the program has been a creative arts program for seniors. The other part has been current events. I have served as a teacher for over 10 years, and I've published two poetry books. And also, right now, my campaign is organizing. My background has been in the Black Lives Matter. I occupy Wall Street movements. I've led mass movements with thousands of protesters in the streets, even as recently as two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Rosser.
Thank you all, and hello to everyone viewing today. My name is Mario Rosser, and I'm running for city council for three reasons. Number one, to keep Harlemites in Harlem, to make sure we invest in our young people, and to keep this neighborhood safe for everyone. I was raised by a single mother who overcame drug addiction shortly before I was born, and I actually grew up coming home to eviction notices on my front door. My life changed when I was a teenager, and I got a letter under the door admitting me to Columbia University. And ever since, my life mission has been to expand opportunity to all. Specifically in the city, we face two issues right now that are most pressing. Number one, making sure that we secure safety and physical security for everyone in New York, whether that be from the police or whether that be from other New Yorkers. But now it's about what are we going to do to create safe conditions in our neighborhood and to create prosperity? That largely centers around what we do in this economic recovery. What I'm proposing is a major investment in our youth programs and educational resources in the neighborhood. I call it a Harlem Youth Commitment. Specifically in my career, I've worked in technology, helping small businesses grow through platforms like LinkedIn, helping hundreds of small businesses and startups grow. And I've worked to expand citywide mentorship programs for first-generation college students. Those are the issues that are at stake concretely in moving Harlem forward. We must get young people opportunity and things to do. If we don't, nothing else matters. That's specifically what I focus my career on. Thank you.
And briefly, Mario, just in terms of what your professional work has mostly been, what has it mostly been?
My professional work has been specifically at LinkedIn, helping small businesses and startups grow across a variety of industries and advocating for the hiring of Black and Latinx employees within the tech industry. And beyond that, I've spent a lot of time expanding citywide nonprofit mentorship programs. So my career has been intersectional in that way.
Great, and we'll get back to more of that, I'm sure. Keith Taylor, over to you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Keith Taylor. For the past 30 years, from caseworker to commissioner, I have been fighting to address the systemic problems facing the Harlem community, such as unifying families as a caseworker at Harlem Dow Children's Services, as a New York City police officer fighting police corruption and internal affairs, and as a correction department commissioner reforming the fight against violence behind Rikers laws. I am running to fight against police injustice through criminal justice reform to address the systemic public health inequities so that Harlem receives its fair share of needed government resources and to discontinue the practice of oversattering Harlem with substance abuse and other related services. I have had a number of different leadership roles on the community board for the past 12 years. I was first vice chair, was chair of a number of different committees. I was a founding trustee of a STEM charter school in the Bronx. It was on the Board of Directors of the United, sorry, Upper Manhattan Empowerment Zone for six years as chair of its nominated committee. As a professor at John Jay College, I'm frequently asked to speak to the media nationally on police policy issues, of which I'm an expert.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a very strong, impressive, and deep field here, so that's great. I'm glad to hear from everybody in your remarks about your qualifications and your public service. So now let's dig into some more on the issues of importance to your candidacies and the district that you hope to represent. So for this round, we're going to start with Ruth McDaniel's and go in the same order we just went. And the question is, please name two pressing issues facing this district, any two you want, and on each, something specific that you would try to do as a city council member to improve the situation. Two pressing issues for the district, and on each, something specific you would try to do as a city council member to address the issue. Go ahead, Ruth.
Well, the first major thing that I noticed in my community is the effect of incarceration. But most far, one in three households are affected by that system. For the last 50 years of my life, in fact, there have been numerous effects that played out because of this system, and it's racially motivated. The fact that we've had drugs in this community for decades and people locked up for decades and nobody really addressing the effects of it is a problem. Housing, returning citizens, and them being displaced also makes our homeless problem even more just in other communities. As it stands, we have individuals who come home and can't go back to the home that they live in because of some of the legislations that are in place. And I'm not waiting until I become city council to work on this. I'm working on this currently. I've been working on projects currently. One of the pieces of legislation that I'm pushing is the right to fair housing. This is a piece of legislation that allows returning citizens the opportunity to get housing without a criminal background check. That's a major factor, because when you're paroled, you cannot, as a felon, come home if there's already a felon there. If there's a felon in that household, you cannot go back. And in a community where sometimes incarceration is generational, it's an impact. We have family members who are not permitted to come home, thereby leaving them in a shelter.
Okay, Athena, over to you. Two pressing district issues and something you'd try to do about each as a city council member. Go ahead.
Yes, so I've been talking about specifically the economic recovery and housing, both of which have been major drivers in my life. Throughout the pandemic, I've served, you know, over 10,000 constituents, helping them with recovery efforts, from food relief, trying to tackle food insecurity, from helping folks with unemployment, because there's been significant joblessness, helping people to have rent relief, to access rent relief, because there's been so much displacement and people have not been able to afford housing. This has been a global pandemic, as we know, with great uncertainty. But it's also caused a lot of unrest, because many in our community do not know how to access the supports and the resources they need. So my campaign has continued to focus on this. I will continue to make sure that as a city council member, we have jobs, we have green and tech jobs, but also just training of apprenticeships and young people who have opportunity so that they may access college and education. I'm a first-generation college student, and that is critical in economic recovery as we move forward.
Thank you. Kristin, over to you.
One of the issues I care most about and want to address is homelessness in the community. I am proposing that instead of being a right-to-shelter city, which is how New York is currently set up, and the shelters have become big business, that instead we do a homes guarantee and really guarantee housing as a human right for every person. Now, if I am not able, because your question was about what specifically we are going to do. So if I am not able to get it passed in a larger legislative space, I personally have committed to my discretionary funds going towards a pilot program to house the homeless in this district. I do believe that not only is it the right thing to do, but we will see it will save money, it will have better health outcomes. It'll be overall greater for those individuals as well as our community. The second issue I want to bring up is just true participation in the democratic process. I and many others have been left out for too long. One of the great things about my platform, it spells out Harlem, and it covers seven different focus areas. But the community was engaged in making it. We have weekly general assemblies, and I would hold more things like that for policy.
And very quickly, Kristin, when you say you would do a pilot program to house folks experiencing homelessness with your discretionary money, what does that mean? Does that mean you're giving out rent subsidies?
So I haven't crafted the full details of it yet. But yes, it'll probably be something along the lines of rent subsidy.
Thank you. Mario, over to you on two pressing district issues and something you'd do about each as a city council member. Go ahead.
Number one, the most important issue facing Harlem without debate is the fact that there are thousands of families in Harlem who are on the edge of eviction. We speak so much about preserving the culture of Harlem. You want to preserve the culture of Harlem, you keep the working-class black people in Harlem. And so, at the end of the day, so much of running for office is about these big sexy policies. But at the end of the day, the most effective thing you can do as a city council office is help people on an everyday customer service, constituent service basis, navigate the processes to help them stay in their apartments. And what you're going to get from me is an extremely customer service and responsive-oriented city council office, which is a key differentiator from what Harlemites are facing today when they're not getting phone calls returned. Beyond that, there are a variety of legislative measures that I'm going to support to preserve justing affordable housing, expand tenant protections, and numerous other measures. Number two, the most pressing issue without debate in this community is people's physical security, whether that be from the police or whether that be from other Harlemites. At the end of the day, there's a lot of fear mongering going around the response. What are we specifically going to do? We cannot throw policing at this issue and expect that to solve everything. But we're also not at the point where we can abolish police.
We're going to come back to public safety and police reform in a follow-up round, so we'll get to hear from you more on that soon. We're going over to Keith Taylor for two pressing district issues and what you would try to do about them. Go ahead.
Well, absolutely. We're looking at evictions and eviction moratorium. That's a pressing issue. Food insecurity is another pressing issue. Getting our schools open is something that I would also focus on, particularly the low literacy rates that children have in Harlem and across the city. Literacy is a social justice issue. It's a determinant of economic security, health, and mental health and democracy. As long as our schools are not performing adequately, we are going to continue the dysfunction of the last 40, 50 years. So I would be focusing on strengthening our schools, our public schools' ability to address this issue through educator certification and training and through focusing resources on allowing our children to get up to speed in their ability to be literate and therefore able to participate fully in society.
And Keith, the first thing you mentioned was evictions. Is there something specific that you would be trying to do as a city council member to stem?
Well, I would be focusing on continuing a moratorium on housing evictions. I'd also be looking at addressing businesses that are facing the same dilemma. And that would be through legislative, through collaborating with my legislative allies in the city council.
Interesting.
The second thing is...
Sorry, I got to move on, but there might be a chance later on for that thought. William Allen, over to you. Two district issues and what you try to do about them. Go ahead.
I think right out of the gate, we're going to have to really stabilize the community. And so I'm going to be looking at issues pertaining to equity. We've got to make sure that people be able to stay in their homes, and they can stay in their homes affordably. We also got to make sure to take care of our small businesses. And so one of the public policies that I'm going to be promoting is commercial rent stabilization. We got to move our small business to a different way in terms of how they pay rent, because these businesses are essential to the life of our community, and I'm going to focus on that. And all that mix, I'm going to look at making sure that every New Yorker, but particularly Harlem, have a basic income. And so I will be supporting any provision that's going to give money in people's pockets so they can feel stabilized, not only in the Harlem community, but throughout the city. What's interesting, right now in Harlem, less than 50% of the population is now calling himself African-Americans. I mean, we are losing properly by leaps and brows. And I think I'm the only one on the panel, maybe there might be others, but I actually helped to develop housing in Harlem. I was the first special advisor to the president of Harlem Community Improvement. We had a $250 million budget from the mayor at that time, David Dinkins. We had 82% of the real estate in Harlem at that time was in control by the city. And when David Dinkins lost his election and Giuliani came in, we lost a lot of that property. And so I understand that gentrification is a public policy vehicle, and so we need to begin to talk about it, address it, and begin to look at the appropriate policies by which we can keep New Yorkers as New Yorkers. But right now, eviction is happening to all of us.
Thank you. Cordell, over to you.
Yes, housing, hands down, is the number one subject that I run into in Harlem, walking the streets, working in the community, talking to residents on every level. There's a number of things that I would fight for. One of them is legislation that limits the reasons for eviction. You know, we evict, and then we still have to house, and we pay inexorbitant amounts of money to put people in shelters when we can direct funding and policy to make sure we keep people in their homes and that evictions are not happening. There should be more funding given to NYCHA for repairs, but there should be accountability with it to make sure that this money is being spent properly and correctly, and repairs are happening. Public housing is one of the real remaining true forms of affordable housing left in New York City. City land and city property should be used for projects that include, really include, a serious amount of affordable housing for low-income and working-class families, not affordable housing that's not affordable to people in the community, because that further gentrifies and displaces and pushes community people out. We do also have to create opportunities, especially during this pandemic, for our small homeowners and small building owners to hold on to their property. I'm sorry, and the other is education. I spent...
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Joshua, over to you.
Thank you for the question. So housing is definitely the primary concern for residents in Harlem. We need more affordable housing, but we also need a comprehensive plan, a vision for our community. So as a city council member, what I will undertake is a comprehensive planning study for our entire district so that we can identify more opportunities to create project-based Section 8 housing, homeownership opportunities, create subsidized space for our small businesses, and also work-to-live zoning for artists. We need to have a comprehensive... We need to have a comprehensive plan to ensure that with the city's budget system that we're making long-term capital planning. In addition to that, we have to clean up Harlem. Sanitation is a huge issue for our community. We must ensure that Harlem gets the same level of service as other neighborhoods in Manhattan. We need to use smart technology to make our sanitation system overall more efficient using big belly waste bins in our community like they're being utilized downtown. And also using smart technology, the track wrote at infestations in real time so we can address these quality of life issues that have a serious effect on mental health in our community.
Thank you. And certainly, last but not least for this round, Pierre, go ahead. Over to you.
Thank you so much, Ben. There are two initiatives that we'd like to see passed in the first hundred days of city council. One, we want to lower the area median income to move into affordable housing. Currently, it's set for most units at $63,000. The area median income in Harlem is $35,000. So we need to make those two things come into congruence so that our Harlemites can move into the affordable housing that's currently priced out. We also have to check on the credit rating system. That's a part of that that's pricing Harlemites out. Secondly, we want to make sure that there's rapid testing in our schools, which is currently not happening, which is the reason why schools keep shutting down over and over. It's really senseless that we haven't switched to rapid testing months ago, which we've been advocating for because we do not know whether the children, staff or anybody else who's walking into the building has COVID. So these are initiatives that we need to pass quick, fast so that we can keep Harlem safe and moving forward.
And quickly, Pierre, in the discussion of AMI, does that mean you're looking for opportunities to build significantly more affordable housing in the district?
Well, absolutely. Anything to make sure that we close this clear homelessness gap when number one city for homelessness in the country. So of course, building affordable housing and private partner, private public partnerships that include a significant amount of affordable housing, 50% in something in that capacity is something that we would like to see.
All right, thank you. So that is a segue into our next round here. The question here is about how you're thinking and several of you, if not all of you, talked about this in the last round, but to go deeper on this is how you're thinking about this district as a changing district, which of course has been a topic of debate, controversy, consternation over years and even decades now, about a changing district, about the culture and character of the district, about housing affordability, of course, as part of that and gentrification, as several of you mentioned. How are you thinking about where the district will be when you would come into office in January of 2022? And how you would try to address these community neighborhood issues that relate to not only policy that comes through the city council, but also issues of constituent services and community in the district? How you would address those variety of issues that relate to the change in character and makeup of this district? So Joshua, we're going to start with you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. I'm already doing this work in my community. A lot of people come to me, reach out to me with various housing issues to get advice, to get, you know, understand the issue that the challenge that they're facing and how to address it. For example, I just got a call yesterday from a constituent or resident of our district who watched one of our forums, reached out about a housing issue that she had. She lives with her brother in a rent stabilized apartment. She came home from work one day and her brother unfortunately passed away in the apartment. While she was taking time to mourn with her family, her landlord proceeded to illegally evict her, changing the locks on the apartment, barring her from getting access back into her apartment, her property. These are the kinds of situations that people in our community are constantly struggling with, that we need real elected leadership who understands these issues inside and out and can really address them and give people the proper resources, expand our right to counsel laws, fight for just cause eviction, fight for legislation that's really going to make meaningful changes in the lives of our community and really preserve the affordable housing that we have because we're losing our current affordable housing at a rapid rate. And we need to make sure that we not only fight for more affordable housing, but we're actually maintaining the affordable housing stock that's available to us.
And quickly, Joshua, you believe in keeping community preference portion of new affordable housing that is city subsidized. You believe in a community preference for some of that housing?
Absolutely. This should definitely 100% be a preference for people who have that need for affordable housing, who already live in our community.
Okay, thank you. Pierre, over to you on this question of how you're thinking about a changing district, especially when it comes to issues of affordability and gentrification and a sense of community. Go ahead.
Absolutely. First, it starts with being here in the community. What our Harlemites, our constituents are saying right now is that they don't know where our leadership is at a city council level. And that's a shame. That's been happening for years. We lost a million dollars immediately in the 2017 election from not doing participatory budgeting. And so these initiatives matter and being here in the community to tackle these problems as they come up on a daily basis matter. And when you're not here, nothing positive can get done. Secondly, I believe you have to have macro and micro level solutions to these problems that we see trash on our streets, homelessness, education divides and a lack of jobs in our community. You have to have solutions for these initiatives, these problems on day one so that we can tackle them and use every day in city council to help Harlem, which currently, again, has a lack of leadership. So I believe that's where we need to go.
Okay, to Athena.
Yes, so definitely want to tackle this question. In my capacity, not only as the borough president's director, but over 30 years as a nonprofit executive, I've worked for these umbrella organizations that are focused on the critical needs of communities. So I would continue working on issues like gas outages, which are daily coming to my office saying, could you help with me in NYCHA? One-shot deals, making sure people who are unable to get the income security that they need, that they have those resources, working with folks at 33 Broadway on evictions, making sure that their rent affairs are being dealt with, succession for seniors. I work with the Mitchell Lamas. I work with the HDFCs. I work with the cooperatives. I am a renter and I am a co-op owner over my life. So I know these issues firsthand, not just in an academic way. And I know how to fight for people as an advocate. So I will continue doing that. When we talk about changing of the district, I've worked with leaders who have been at the top of these organizations, but I've also worked in the grassroots with people who are just everyday people who are struggling with the displacement. I know the diverse needs of the district. I've always been accessible. I will advocate for more transparency. I think we need more unity in this community. I have always operated in a collaborative coalition building way so that there's not silos. So that will be part of the change that I do believe is strongly needed in this district and that I'm the candidate who could bring that new vibrancy.
Quickly, Athena, what's one thing you do to create more unity, community in a changing district where there are, you know, tensions sometimes, a lot of gentrification, as folks have mentioned, with new people moving in, changes in the demographics of the district? How do you create more community? What's one specific strategy for that?
Yes, so one strategy is just having an open door policy. I don't deny anyone. I always return phone calls. I'm accessible on the ground. And we actually have the first borough president's office in a storefront so people can just come off the street, no metal detectors. And I don't have a silver spoon or political club that I'm accountable to. So I will always be accessible and transparent. People just need that they know they can reach you and get help.
Kristin, we're over to you on how you're thinking about a changing district, community and affordability. Go ahead.
So at the risk of maybe losing some votes, I'm just going to say it like it is, which is that we have to confront white supremacy. The effects of white supremacy on Harlem specifically have displaced our community, particularly black individuals. Harlem's history is historically black and it's beautiful and it's a rich cultural heritage where we have fought for black liberation. And I don't want to see that lost. And I have not said anything against people moving in. As I've said before, I will continue to say it. It's not that new people can't move in. It's not that white people can't move in, but it's unacceptable to displace people. The displacement has to stop. And we have to make sure that we are putting our focus on the true enemies of the people, which means regulating the landlords, regulating developers. It means that we really need to take a stand against white supremacy and the effects that it's having on our community and the displacement that it's causing.
And what role does new housing play in all this? Is new housing part of the problem? Is new housing part of the solution? Very briefly, Kristin.
Well, we need a moratorium on all new developments until we get that racial impact study. We also need to totally revamp our U-LAR process because the community doesn't have a true say in these new developments.
Great, thank you. Mario, over to you on this question. Go ahead.
Ben, could you please restate the question? I think so much has been said.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, the question is really more of a broad, what your lens is on these issues. This has been a changing district. There's been a lot of controversy, frustration over that from some issues of gentrification, displacement. How are you thinking about trying to solve those issues, try to address those issues? What are the problems that you see? What are the solutions that you see when it comes to changing demographics to the district, especially more white people moving into the district and black people being displaced and those demographic numbers shifting? And the affordability questions that are part of that, of course, related to housing?
Let me be very clear. The white people who I speak with in Harlem, and I've spoken with many of them, are in agreement that they want black people to still live in Harlem. Everyone is in agreement on this. It's not like people just want folks to get up out of here. And so at the end of the day, we need to take specific steps through this office to make sure public officials and our city council members are not contributing to displacement through bad public policy and poorly negotiated real estate deals. I'm not accountable to real estate developers. I'm not going to support the building of any type of structure that isn't at least 50% actually affordable. And so right now, I believe that we need to tackle issues as they are in real life, not as we wish they could be. People are staying in Harlem. And in fact, in order for us to get real resources to this community, we need all of our resources. We need the white people in Harlem. We need the black people in Harlem. And I'm very clear, this is a community that is very much defined by excellence in black culture and that can never be taken away.
And how do you ensure that that remains? That was actually what I was going to ask you before you even mentioned that. How do you, you know, ensure that that history and that culture remains and as demographics change and, you know, displacement occurs? How do you, how do you ensure, what are some steps that can be taken?
Well, if you want to preserve the culture in Harlem, you keep the black people in the working class, black people in Harlem. That means concretely expanding tenant protections. That means preserving our existing affordable housing. We got buildings in Harlem that are legendary buildings like Esplanade and Riverbend where you have 20% and 17% fees going up, literally making it such that kids and grandkids of our elders who came from South Carolina and Virginia and North Carolina, they won't be able to get the apartments they grew up in.
Thank you. All right, Keith, I imagine you have some thoughts on this subject. Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I certainly agree with the other candidates in terms of the issues that Harlem is facing. There are so many different concerns that Harlem had to deal with before the pandemic existed that have been exacerbated by this year and plus of dealing with very harsh conditions. We, housing affordability is something that we are going to have to really use all the resources that we have at the state, federal and local level to preserve those who are here because we're losing people on a daily basis. Additionally, as far as development, it has to be contextual to the neighborhood with which it's being done. I have been working to get a historic district named in central Harlem preserve, to preserve the cultural legacy that people come from all over the world to exist. Because we're losing people physically and we're also losing our culture. We're losing, also losing our architecture. So it's multiple, multiple things that requires multiple solutions.
Now, often contextual development means not adding a lot of housing. It means, you know, trying to make sure that there's, you know, not significant upzonings, let's say. Is a significant amount of new housing in the district something that you would be in favor of? Or do you think that's not what the district needs?
I think that we have to use every single tool in the toolbox. The same thing with education. We don't limit ourselves to just one solution with housing. We have to look at how can we get additional housing? Let's say make basement apartments legal, other ways of expanding our housing stock without destroying the neighborhood.
William Allen, close us out on this subject, how you're thinking about these issues and what you try to do about them. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I want to thank my colleagues in the race. They all have great, great ideas. And it's going to take a lot more than the ideas. It's going to take really an understanding of the political climate. It's going to take an understanding of prior existing relationships. It's going to take an understanding of how nonprofit functions in this economy as well as for-profit businesses, the role of the academic institution. You know, I have all those experiences. I've been in a national capacity. I've been in a statewide capacity. I'm the last African American county election chief in the state of New York. Staff 150 people, manage millions of dollars. And I know that ideas alone and visions alone won't save a lot of lives. This is the city, you're running for the city council of New York, a billion dollar corporation. And you're going to have to have unique relationships and unique cry experience because in the balance of all of this is that you got to save some lives. Some of us got backgrounds in public schools. I mean, Cordell and I were both school board members and we did it for a long time. Athena have appointed people to the community board. And maybe some others have had some leadership roles where they've moved people forward. This time around, the city council has to be a team player person. And that they're going to have to make sure that the community boards that are associated with their appointments are uniquely tied to what is the future and how we move this community forward.
And Cordell, round us out here on this question about a changing district, about gentrification, affordability and how you're thinking about these challenges. Go ahead.
Yes, so firstly, I think we have to stop the bleed. Harlem does not need another luxury condominium. We need to, or any luxury housing right now, the need is for low income, working class families. We have to also bridge the communication gap between old and new residents, which is something that really doesn't often happen. There should be regular meetings with all stakeholders on every level. You know, you have a community that feels as if it's being pushed out and it is being pushed out. Whether that's the intent or not, that's what's happening. People feel like they're being pushed out. We have to support community-based organizations that help people navigate through public benefit resources and make sure everybody knows that the people who protected Harlem, who made Harlem a beautiful and attractive place for other people to come to, are protected and they are able to stay here. They have a right to be here. And this ranges from housing policy, but even the sensitivities to culture and lifestyle. I see police being called for things that are not a crime. And all of this just contributes to making people feel that they're being attacked, making people feel that they're being pushed out. So we need to make sure that folks feel like they belong. We have to all come to the table and figure out solutions.
Thank you. And we're coming to policing next. But quickly, Cordell, to what degree do you feel like there are significant racial tensions in the district? I mean, how much of an issue is that? Is it, are we close to a, you know, a 10 out of 10 alarm here? Or is it boiling a little less towards the surface?
Yeah, so I remember before the George Floyd incident occurred, we had an incident with Amy Cooper in Central Park. And that kind of situation has happened. I can't tell you to what extent it is happening, but that has happened in our community where people feel like, you know, police are being called because people are standing outside. That might be inconvenient. It may be not comfortable for some people or they like not to see them standing outside, but if people are not committing a crime, you know, the police don't need to be called to move them. And also, please understand the danger in calling the police, particularly on young black men in this community. So there is an awareness.
That is a key segue to our next round, which is on policing and public safety. Policing, public safety, police reform, often thought of as in competition with each other sometimes, but they're obviously two sides of the same coin. We are in another city budget season right now. None of you are in the city council to be part of the actual debate and vote over the city budget, which will include a debate and vote. A debate and vote over uh funding for the police department, but that was obviously contentious last year, will be contentious again this year. And very likely will be contentious in the future as well. So how are you thinking about what needs to be done about police reform? Public safety, funding for the NYPD, policing in this district. As you hope to be the representative in the city council in the future, what are your key priorities for both police reform and public safety? Kristen, let's start with you.
Yes, thank you for the question. The H in my Harlem platform stands for holding police accountable and abolition. So I am an abolitionist. I do not imagine a world where we erase police overnight. Uh, so to those who get concerned right off the bat, that is not what I am saying. Uh, but what I am saying is that we need to move towards a system of prevention, preventing violence before it happens. Preventing violence by having education, having housing, having mental and emotional health services. And we need to also move towards a system where we look at addressing problems and conflict uh in ways that don't involve police. Uh, there are ways to deescalate, to have conflict resolution, to have restorative justice models. I am for reallocating funds from the NYPD. Um, I would call for three billion in the next city budget. Um, I would call for more after that. Um, and instead, what I want to fund is, like I said before, prevention. Um, Angela Davis has said abolition is not the absence, but a presence. Um, it is the presence of community care. It is a presence of uh supports for the community.
Mario, how are you thinking about these issues of policing, police reform, public safety and police funding? Go ahead.
Whether it is violence from police against our people. Or violence in our community amongst people who are not members of law enforcement, I have a zero tolerance for them both. We need safety for everyone. And so specifically, we have a community where we have experienced the greatest economic crash in our lifetimes. It is no surprise that violent crime is up. It's no surprise that our houses population, which is off often dealing with mental illness, is at a peak. We need to make sure we're getting relief to people and providing an alternative to streets. We need to set down drug markets. We need to get people real legitimate opportunity and make sure this economic recovery fund that directs resources to our young people. Who have so many entrepreneurial ideas instead of the streets. But at the same time, we need to make sure we. Stop the violence now. We need to expand anti-violence prevention programs. And if we're going to have police. We need to make sure those police actually understand what's going on in Harlem because they live in Harlem and because they respect the people. We can't expect police officers to be coming from Long Island and Westchester and treat our people with the same respect. I'm encouraged because NYPD uh reported thirty-five percent applications of black applicants are up. I don't think that's a solution. And I want to get to a point where the conversation around public safety isn't centered on policing. That's not where we are today, but people in Harlem are dealing with real things and I have a zero tolerance for violence from police or from our people.
Keith, over to you.
Yeah, I uh spent twenty-three years in NYPD. I understand some of the uh quite a few of the inequities that have been spoken about, but. The idea of reducing police interaction when you're dealing with organized criminal gangs and organizations. Or if you're dealing with terrorist activities, it's not something that can be handled by anyone other than the police unless you're going to go with the military. So we need to have the police. They need to be a part of uh of society. Uh, and we need to make sure that whatever changes are made actually improve. The uh communities that the police have to serve because ultimately they are public servants. They work for us. So we absolutely do have control over how they interact with uh the community, but we can't. Uh, make changes that are going to ultimately hurt the safety, hurt our citizens by uh not having a functional uh. Agency to deal with with these types of criminal activities.
Keith, are you a a proponent of broken windows policing?
Uh, you know, I think that a lot of 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 strategies like broken windows have been abused and utilized. Same thing with stop question for us. To to the disadvantage disadvantage of communities of color. And so when we see those types of inequities occur, whether they are within the police agency or outside. Dealing with communities like Harlem and Harlums all over the country, we need to stop them in in tracks, address them as they are and and do away with uh policing that hurts. Uh, uh, communities of color.
Thank you. Uh, William, over to you.
Yeah, you know, communities like Harlem have been in crisis uh for a long time. And everybody is saying this and 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 everybody represents talk my ideas and I I know for a fact that ideas do matter. But leadership experience matters more. And we live in a a culture in New York City where we're overpoliced and underprotected. Uh, we must reform every single part of the criminal justice system. Um, that will include increased diversity and transparency. And and my priority in the council would be to reduce the size and the roles of the police and shift the budget to fund affordable housing. Social services, education, workforce development, mental and physical healthcare. And I like to say briefly that I have nine points that I want. The Harlem voters to consider. One, we must strengthen the public role on the precinct community council. It has to be really functional. Currently, it's not funded. Two, create a police commission. We we need to move away from having one police commissioner and having a police commission. Because it's just one, it's it's not in this climate. We don't need a super general.
Number three.
Strengthen the role of the civilian complaint board, pass the right to know act, increase state and federal government support for body cams. Improve the effective use of body cam and reform and to fund the police ball study with a higher.
Cordell, over to you on police reform and public safety. Go ahead.
I agree with some of the points that were formally made. I'm not going to go over, but one thing in particular that we must do is direct policing away from our public schools. We need to remove the NYPD from public safety and the conditioning of our children uh for our school uh to prison pipeline. What we should be focusing on, we need, instead of policing in every school, we need social workers in every school. We need counselors in every school. We need librarians. We need resources. Many of our children are coming to school from shelters due to the other uh social ills that are going on in our community. These things are translating down to their education and them learning. We also have to make sure. Uh, remote devices are to this generation what textbooks were to us. Every child should have a remote device. Every child should have broadband. They shouldn't be struggling. We are trying to prepare this generation for the next uh for the next wave of employment. And we want them to be employed. Young people leaving high school should have a skill. They should have a trade that can make them employable. Whether they decide to go to college or not, this is where funding should be shifted and where it should be directed.
Cordell, other than schools, is there too much police presence in this district right now? The right amount or too little?
I think we are uh we are we are overpoliced in 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 the wrong ways. Um, you know, I've seen police call for matters that really didn't. Uh, and need the police, the energy that police come with for that. I think we we do need mental health uh services. We do need people who can handle substance users. And not call the police for those matters.
Thank you. Joshua, how are you thinking about police reform and public safety, NYPD budgeting and other related issues? Go ahead.
I look at this um uniquely. I think we need to look at public safety as a whole, you know, uh in a holistic approach. I remember growing up here in Harlem and being pressured to join gangs. And I also remember just hanging out with my friends. And police officers coming by trying to label us as a gang. We're just kids hanging out on our block. So we also, we need to keep. Our police accountable. And we also need to make sure that police it police um is being directed where it's needed, right? So that means that we we take things out of the police department's scope of responsibility, such as nonviolent crimes, such as traffic. We don't need police in every single interaction in our daily lives. That's only going to lead to over incarceration. We don't need police in our schools fueling the the um the the school to prison pipeline. But we do need to address violent crime in our communities. Over seventy percent of shootings went unsolved last year. And people don't feel safe in their neighborhoods. That's a real problem. And while we understand that poverty is the root of crime and we have to give major investments to working class communities to intervene before people. End up in this cycle of crime, but we also need to make sure that people who are shooting, people who are bringing uh guns illegally. Out of state into our communities, that we are directing police forces to tackle those issues.
Thank you. Pierre, over to you.
Uh, I'm for the reallocation of at least two billion dollars of uh our city council budget from the NYPD to mental health resources. Uh, substance abuse treatment programs and the like. Uh, now, out of the ten billion dollar budget for the NYPD. Now, they can use certainly use the eight billion dollars that's remaining to tackle terrorism and any other initiatives that they need to. But when I spoke with NYPD uh officials, even they know that uh their budget uh could be trimmed down to for more useful initiatives within our community. So uh, we need to do that. And we need to keep our community safe through other means besides uh police presence.
And do you think the district is currently uh overpoliced, policed about right or underpoliced?
Well, it's overpoliced. If you, wh- when we have a situation where uh people are being locked up. Uh, instead of going to the programs that we're we all speak about on a daily basis and advocating, uh it's a clear, clear problem. And I also want to add that I'm not going to forget about. Uh, Breonna Taylor and George Floyd and Eric Garner and individuals who uh have lost their lives because of interactions that should have never occurred.
Thank you. Uh, Athena, round us out with your thoughts. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. My my colleagues, uh William and Cordell always uh speak about the experience that we have. Uh, because I think with the exception of them and Keith Taylor, uh we all are the only ones who have direct line to NYPD. Uh, to be able to uh 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 take a a call, I'm sorry, and and call a commander, a chief of a department. I currently am able to do that. I have relationships with NYPD, uh chief of the thirty-second Greenie and chief um of other departments like Brown. The reason I say that is because it's critical. I've developed a police reform toolkit working with my office already, and we have advocated for police reforms. Some of those reforms include. More accountability, more transparency, demilitarizing and retraining officers. We've worked with the district attorney's office, the the attorney general's office, and I will continue to advocate for redirecting resources to youth and mental health programs. But I will also advocate for restorative justice programs to address hate crimes as well as to fight gun violence. I've been already on the ground dealing with this issue.
Very quickly, when you say it's an advantage to be able to call a certain police official, why is, what does that get you?
It's critical because we have to be able to create and develop strategy that's community driven together. You cannot create strategies that are comprehensive, working in silos. And you have to be able to talk diplomatically with police officers, but you also have to be able to reflect the needs on the ground of community. I have both and I'm a bridge in each of those communities.
We're in our final round of uh regular responses here before we go into a um lightning round. I want to briefly talk about education. As I said at the top of this debate, we're not going to be able to get to everything, nor are we going to be able to give every topic. It's due, of course. But I'd like to know from each of you, an education priority that you would bring to the city council. What's something you would fight for? The city council doesn't. Have that much direct control over education policy, but of course has an oversight role, a funding role, et cetera. So what's an education priority for this district that you would bring to the city council? We're going to start with uh Cordell and then go again in the same order. Cordell, what's an education priority and why?
Equitable funding for all of our public schools. Um, we have to make sure that we're supporting public schools uh in neighborhoods like Harlem. Where at the level that they can support the students that they are teaching. We also, I will also fight for uh that a more. Racially and culturally reflective curriculum and personnel are in our city schools because that's very important to our students that are in schools, to all students. In fact, when you're talking about black history being a part of the curriculum, black history is American history. All of our children should be learning that, and I'm going to fight to make sure that that is included as part of the curriculum. Uh, and like I said before, social workers, nurses, librarians, counselors in every school, more cure violence programs. More uh uh after-school programs, entrepreneurial classes, things that will make our students ready for the future. Thank you.
Joshua, education priorities that you would bring to the city council. Go ahead.
My education priorities are, one, reintroducing vocational education back into the public school system. We need to make sure that we're providing ample career development opportunities for our youth. Everybody is does not need to go to the college track to make a decent living, to have a a great lifestyle. So we want to make sure that we're giving. Our children all the opportunities available. We also, I'm I'm one of the candidates who have supported a plan to make CUNY system. Free and accessible for all residents of our city by fully funding CUNY. We need to make sure that all kids who do want to college, want to go to college, hi and and achieve higher education. Have that opportunity. In addition, we need to provide strong oversight of the Department of Education, right? We need to make sure that uh we're reforming the procurement process. We're making sure that school public funds are being distributed to the schools in greatest need, right? We need an equitable distribution of public funds for our, particularly for our schools right here in Harlem. We have to support our public schools. I grew up in a public school. Um, a product of the the New York City's public school system. I know that our public school kids can be just as great. Uh, as any kid who went to a specialized high school, et cetera, as long as we give them the opportunities and resources that they deserve.
Pierre, education priorities. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, being a teacher, teaching sixth and eighth through A D S L in Washington Heights at I S one forty-three Eleanor Roosevelt Junior High, we saw many challenges in the education space. Uh, including a lack of air conditioners, which we fought for for years and which is now in law. Currently, we have four uh libraries and two certified librarians in the. Uh, district and C E C, school district five. Uh, we need to roll that back and make sure that uh we put uh libraries and and certified. Uh, librarians uh into our school system. So we, this is initiative that we've been fighting about for years. You can find it on our website and the response from. The city promising to uh have these libraries. Now the next step is follow-up. And that's why we need to be at the city council level so that we can make sure that these things get done and it's not just lip service. There are many initiatives in the education space like this that have to be changed immediately to make sure that our kids are uh living up to the expectations that we hope for uh c- citywide.
Thank you. Athena.
Yeah, so this is an issue I'm very passionate about because I'm a first generation college student, the first in my family to to get a masters. And I grew up in New York City public schools, but I also know the the benefit of also having access to college and private school settings that enable our kids. To thrive and grow. I'm a mother of a teenage daughter. So daily I've been helping with the reopening of our schools during the pandemic. I hosted a series of town halls focused on childcare needs. Focused on after-school programs to supplement what's happening daily in the schools as well as to deal with the technology and digital divide issue. Those are all things that I will continue to advocate for as a city councilwoman uh addressing education. But also I believe that our cur- curriculum needs to be strengthened. Uh, it definitely needs to focus on remediation because many have fallen into the cracks during this time. And what can we do to elevate the skill sets of our young people? Also making sure that some of youth programs are accessible to our kids, not just for jobs. But also just for supplementary learning in addition to what kids are always uh dealing with. I also know that we have to work with the the school leadership teams. I have been the president of a parent board and I work with the chancellor. And the local school leaders and principals now and through the budget, I will prioritize allocating capital resources to our schools as well. Thank you so much.
Kristen, over to you on education.
Uh, so this is a great question to follow the last one because I've been a teacher for over ten years and I do feel like education is the pathway to. A stronger society, a better world. Um, I want to emphasize mental and emotional health as well as academics, so we holistically address the kids. Um, I would like to see interventions as early as kindergarten where we're talking about interpersonal skills and we're talking about restorative justice models. Because there are other ways to interact and be in the world. There's the possibility for a whole different world through education. Uh, for the last few months, we have been running a bi-weekly program called Inner Peace Kids in District where we have talked about mental and emotional health. So I would amplify that as city councilwoman. And lastly, I just want to address the premise that things are not possible. I am a queer Black woman who is currently most funded and highest endorsed for this seat. And there is never in the history ever been a Black queer woman on the New York City Council, and everything is impossible until it happens.
Thank you. Just, just on that, that note from Kristin about funding and endorsements, I think folks might, you know, want to tout their endorsements. You can do that in your closing statement, but we're not going to get into a debate about those claims by Kristin at the moment. But Mario, let's come to you on your education priorities.
Look, I was born to a mother who became clean from crack cocaine a year before I was born. I was the only one from my block to be able to make it to college. I know what it means to be able to have a better life through education. But the reality is, is that we're not providing a great opportunity for every young person in Harlem. And my vision is a Harlem where every single young person is guaranteed to have a bright future. Number one, I'm going to focus on expanding access to early childhood education. I think that's an area where we may have some success. We can go much further. I'm going to support legislation that makes childcare more affordable as our working parents go back to work. Number two, I'm going to focus on getting these recreation and youth programs fully revitalized, these youth centers open so that kids have things to do. And that when they're between 13 and 18, they're not just on the street, but they're in productive places developed. And beyond that, I focus my career on technology bootcamps, taking folks who are making $20,000 to make it $120,000 in six months. So the conversation doesn't need to be all about, we can't, our kids can't afford this. But the conversation needs to be about, our kids are getting those great paying jobs in the city so that they are building well. That's what I'm about. And finally, I just want to address the idea of experience. You know, we are here. We have an incredibly talented field of people, but we are looking forward to the future. And we need a politics that builds across generations, across age groups, across men and women, and we are here. And so-
Come back to that in your closing statement, which we're getting close to. Keith, over to you on education.
Sure. Education is something that is near and dear to my heart. I worked 10 years at Columbia to get my doctorate in education. And one of the things that I want to, it's more of a value system in the way that I work towards getting solutions, is I always look for innovation, accountability, and cost effectiveness. And with the Department of Education and with the oversight role of the city council over its agencies, the city agencies, the monies that are going to be received from the states as a result of the resolution, the campaign for fiscal equity, the billions of dollars are going to be coming into these school systems over the next few years to address the educational redlining that has existed for many years, which is based on all the other types of redlining that have contributed to the lack of resources for, for young people in central Harlem and the Harlems of other, of, of, of other parts of the city. Obviously, we have to return arts into the Department of Education. We have to have more after-school programs. Some of the other candidates have talked about some of the things that are going to have to occur in order for our students to be able to get back to where they should be in relation to other parts of the city, other, other levels of performance. But this literacy issue is a primary one. It's a social justice issue. And we have to really focus on making, making certain that our children are adequately taught to be literate.
Thank you. And William?
Hey, thank you. I spent a lifetime in, in education. As a teenager, when I was the trustee of the school district here in Harlem, and I spent a lifetime in higher education, also as a professor, and someone who's been a tru-, a student trustee of a major university. Let me just say that here's what I know about education. You got to be in the room. And while, and there's a lot of great ideas here, but some of the ideas I'm missing is how parents are being engaged. I would probably do a survey of this group and determine who was in a school building last time, who actually went to a PTA meeting, who's actually meeting with the parents who are looking for a better way for their children. So sometimes we hear all these ideas, but no one has spoken to the people who need our help the most. That's going to make the difference. So I, I've been endorsed by a union that represents school workers. I've been endorsed by a union that represents park and recreation workers. I've been meeting with parent leaders my entire career. I've been endorsed by-
All right, we're into- We're into a brief, thank you, William. We're into a brief lightning round now of yes, no, or short answer questions, and then we'll get to our closing statements in just a few minutes. But we're going to hit a, a few things here. Unfortunately, we don't have time for folks to explain their answers, but, but here we go. I'll call on you and everybody unmute now. And again, yes or no are very short answers, depending on what the question requires. Do you think the city, and especially this district, should open more charter schools? Pierre?
Yes.
Athena?
Depends. Resources should be prioritized to public school.
Yes or no, please? Kristin?
No.
Mario? Keith?
For charter schools that are performing well, yes.
William?
Yes and no.
Cordell?
No.
Josh? Joshua?
Emphatically, no.
Okay. Do you think there should be a busway on 125th Streets? Mario?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Pierre?
Yes.
Athena?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Ah, unanimous, okay. How many years have you lived in the city council district? William?
All my life.
Cordell?
Almost all my life.
Joshua?
All my life, except for a couple of years at Penn State.
Pierre?
Eight years.
Athena?
Three different locations in Harlem intermittently.
Kristin?
Since I was four months old, a break to go to college.
Mario?
Since I was 18 years old, so that's 12 years.
Keith?
Intimately 40 years.
Okay. There is a sort of informal understanding in the city council that the local council member gets to determine the fate of major land use projects. This is often called member deference. Do you believe in a blanket member deference policy in the city council where the local council member gets to more or less approve or disapprove of significant land use changes? Athena?
Member deference, I understand, I just want to make sure I understand. You're saying that the council member would be the person they defer to? Yes? Yes. No, I believe that land use decisions must always be city council, borough president, city planning, and mayor's decision. It requires everyone in the community.
Okay. Kristin, blanket member deference policy to the, defer to the city council member on major land use projects?
No.
Mario?
No.
Keith?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes, with community participation.
Joshua?
No, I believe the community board should have the most say.
Pierre?
Yes.
Okay. And just last couple, you are participating in a primary that will include ranked choice voting. So assuming that you're all going to be ranking yourselves first on the ballot, who are you ranking second on your ballot? Pierre?
Shiva Simpson.
Athena?
Wow, William Allen.
Kristin?
Ruth McDaniel.
Mario?
Honestly, I, I like everyone, so I can't say at this point.
Undecided at this point. Hey-
The next three weeks.
I'm in the same vote as Mario. There are a lot of great-
That's not fair.
A lot of great candidates, hard to choose.
William?
It's, it's a toss-up between Athena and Cordell.
All right, well, you get to rank up to five, so those are your two and three in some order. Okay, Cordell?
Um, you know, I have to be honest, I have not really given that thought. I'm so, working so hard to run myself.
I'm also undecided.
All right, last one before we go to closing statements. At the same time, there's a mayoral election happening, obviously, a primary for mayor happening at the same time as your primary for city council. So as of the time we're talking here, towards the end of May, who is your preferred Democratic candidate for mayor? Mario?
I like three candidates. I like Maya Wiley, I like Ray Maguire, and I like Eric Adams.
Thank you. Keith?
I was shaking my head in agreement. Those are my same three.
Okay, William?
Andrew Yang, Eric Adams, and Ray Maguire.
All right, everybody's giving three now. Cordell?
Eric Adams.
Great. Joshua?
Eric Adams.
Thank you. Pierre?
Eric Adams, we've endorsed him, we were with him from the beginning, and we've been working together from the beginning.
Athena?
I have relationships and been working with four of them, Maya Wiley, Diane Morales, Eric Adams, as well as Ray Maguire. So I cannot-
All right, Kristin?
I have endorsed Diane Morales for mayor, and she's endorsed me for District Nine.
Okay, good to know. All right, let's go to our closing statements. We're going to start with Mario and get, go through again in the same order, which means that Kristin will get the final closing statement. You have a one-minute closing statement to make your final pitch, in this debate at least, to voters as to why they should choose you in the June primary. Mario, one minute, go ahead.
Thank you all. Number one, I'm running for city council to keep Harlemites in Harlem and preserve our affordable housing. Number two, I'm running to make sure that these recovery funds are directed toward a major investment in our youth opportunity programs. And number three, I'm running to make sure that we keep this neighborhood safe for everyone, whether law enforcement or whether other people in Harlem. I have a zero tolerance for physical insecurity in our neighborhood. So much of the work of city council is about making sure that we're picking up the phones and helping people navigate the array of resources so that they can stay in their homes. I've spent my career helping small businesses grow and startups grow through technology platforms such as LinkedIn. I've spent my, my career helping hundreds of young people and first-generation college students get internships that have changed the economic futures for their families. These are the issues that we face in Harlem right now. And this is going to take a council member who's visible, who is specific, and who has a plan on day one to accomplish concrete things within the next two years.
Thank you.
I would be honored if you ranked me, Mario Rossiter, as your number one choice or in your group of rankings. And I look forward to meeting you in person.
Keith?
Yes. As a Harlem community activist, I've worked on the local community board and leadership positions to advocate for city services for Harlem's residents as former first vice chair of the board, former economic, education, and public safety chairs, and vice chair of the landmarks transportation committee. As a block association president, I've advocated for the establishment of a central Harlem landmark historic district to preserve the Harlem we know and love for future generations. As board chair of the Harlem Independent Living Center, I've advocate for the rights of Harlem's disabled community to promote optimal independent living. And as your city councilperson, I will work tirelessly to provide the leadership required for the multiple crises that Harlem is facing. So I'm asking for your vote so that together we can build a better, safer, and healthier Harlem. And my webpage is tailor-made-for-harlem.com.
Thank you. William?
I, I am running because I believe that by working together, we can bring community and government together to ensure that this city belongs to all of us. I spent my entire life in the service of this community. Most of the community residents know me. As an educator, I've seen how our children can succeed and how they still, how there still exists systemic challenges to their education and to their survival. As a Harlem Democratic district leader, I know that an engaged electorate can claim its power and use it to determine its own leadership. As a former elections chief, I know that representation matters when it comes to protecting our democracy. Our communities have been in crisis for too long. We are over-policed and under-protected. I have always put work over words, and that is why I choose to be your number one candidate and your next city councilman.
Thank you.
917-612-2871.
Thank you. Cordell?
I grew up and raised my family in a Harlem that a lot of people didn't want to live in. I know the tough times we've come through, and I've participated in the process of bringing us through that. And I was taught and groomed and nurtured, scolded, and encouraged by the people of this great community to lead, to listen, and to be responsive to the needs of this community. I've spent my entire life, my adult life and part of my childhood, at the hands of my parents, serving this community. I know what service is about. This job is about service. It's not about position, and I'm ready and willing and able to serve. And I am asking people to vote for me, number one, on June 22nd or June 12th, whichever day you prefer to go out, and make me the next councilperson of this district. Thank you.
You folks have from June 12th to June 20th for early voting, and then June 22nd primary day, and there's also absentee balloting, so there's no excuse not to vote if you're eligible here. All right, Joshua, over to you.
Hi, I'm Joshua Clinton, and I'm running for city council in the ninth district to make Harlem for the many, not the few. I'm running to make sure that we can guarantee housing as a human right for everyone in our community, that we fully fund our public housing, our social institutions, to make sure that no one in our community gets left behind. I have the best experience. I currently work in affordable housing. I served in leadership on a community board, specifically working within the city's budget process. I know many of the candidates who are running. I've learned to admit a lot of things from many of them, but the difference in the vision and the experience that we need is clear. Don't, do not listen to the hubris of candidates that will tell you that experience is all that matters, as they have, provide no vision, no path forward for our community. That can't, couldn't be anything further from the truth. We need vision, but we also need a plan for our community, and we are going to change the trend and direction in which our community is headed. I am the candidate that clearly provides that with meaningful changes, clear practical policy, progressive policy, that will be able to hit the ground running in the city council. I'm asking that you elect me with your number one choice on June 22nd, and please visit my website, joshuclenon.com, to get, learn more about me, my campaign, and get engaged in our efforts. Thank you very much.
Pierre?
Yes, Pierre Gooding, running for city council for the second time in District Nine. Incredibly appreciative for the opportunity coming from the Grant Houses to be a part of something special and change city council with positive leadership. Now, I don't believe that this election is about ripping down posters and lying about biographies. I think this election is about moving Harlem forward and saving lives. We were here from the beginning, making sure that people did not succumb to COVID, and that we had masks in the community, and we continue to do that work now, bringing vaccination sites to Harlem. And I'm incredibly appreciative to all of that, that's work on those endeavors. So it's time to put Harlem first. We're first on the ballot, so you don't have to go far to find us. Please rank us first, and let's put Harlem first. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Athena?
Yes, so I have been born and raised, I tell you, in New York City public housing by a maternal grandmother who was a sharecropper, a mother who was mentally ill, and a father who was a veteran who succumbed to mental, to, to substance abuse. I will continue to be the city council member that will always speak for the voiceless, the most vulnerable, and those who need supportive services. I will continue in my role as a legislator to focus on policy, budget, land use, and constituent services, which is all of my experience for the past seven years at the borough president's office and the past 30 years. I started out as a community board member like Joshua. I now appoint and decide, make decisions, and strategies on community board leadership. I was a parent, a parent board chair, and I continue to work with sisters like Cordell in education, working for our schools. I will continue to work on public safety issues because I've lived it, born and raised in a place where streets and guns and danger were part of my lived experience. I will continue fighting for resource allocation to our city council.
Thank you. Kristin, you get the final word here of many. Go ahead.
So once again, I'm Kristin Richardson-Jordan. You can find me at www.kristinforharlem.com. That's K-R-I-S-T-I-N, two I's because my eyes are wide open. I am a third-generation Harlemite on a mission to disrupt District Nine with radical love, and my platform covers seven focus areas and spells out Harlem. I hope you'll join me as we are a grassroots campaign and a movement for change in this district.
Thank you. All right. All right. Candidates, really appreciate the time and the discussion. It's been a really enlightening and thoughtful discussion. Thank you. You've heard from nine candidates running for city council District Nine, the district mostly centered in central Harlem and currently represented by Bill Perkins, who declined to debate today as he runs for reelection against this field of candidates. Thank you for watching represent NYC election coverage. I'm Ben Max from Gotham Gazette. I hope this debate and other programming from MNN and Gotham Gazette in this election cycle are helpful to you as you make your choices in the June primaries and general election in the fall. Take care.